Yours next, mine. That's my attorney right there. Hey, OJ, you still have to stand in there about a little longer.
Because I was gonna say.
Even though when y'all read.
About real estate law.
Hey, believe me, it's one of the.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started here at six o'clock here on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Glad you're all here to participate in our, our local government. And let's move on down to our panel. Would you please rise and join Councilmember Alan Blackman? And Mr. Blackman, would you come forward with your granddaughters? Mr. Blackman and his granddaughters are going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance, followed by our invocation. If you would, if you would, please let us know who these young ladies are.
This is Brittany Pate. She is six years old. And this is Olivia Pate, and she is three years old.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This past Sunday at our church, we recited the prayer of Saint Francis, and I would like to do that tonight as a part of our prayer. Let us pray. Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there's hatred, let me sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there's doubt, faith. Where's despair, hope. Where there's darkness, light. Where there's sadness, joy. Oh, divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned. And it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. And Lord, we ask you to be with each and every one of us tonight. Be with us as we go home, safe travels. And Lord, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Again, we thank you, Brinkley and Olivia. And we'll give Mr. Blackman a chance to join us. Let's move on down to our approval of our agenda to have a motion.
A move?
Second.
Motion from Ms. McGreev for second. From Mr. Carnes, any discussion? I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our agenda tonight. We have four special presentations this evening. Our first one will be our recognition of employee of the quarter for fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-two, presented by our county administrator, Mr. Dennis Marstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the recognition. We do our employee of the quarter and employee of the year, and this is for our fourth quarter in two thousand and twenty-two. So it's always a great time to highlight all the good work going on among the county employees. We have such a wide variety of service, from our first responders, of course, too many people don't realize we have an airport, an animal shelter, and so many other services in between. And so we do nominations every quarter from different folks. And this individual we're going to recognize tonight, actually, I'm going to say her name first and have her come forward because it's very specific to some work that she's done, but it's really typical of the work that she does day in and day out to represent us as a county workforce. And I'm not so sure that she knows that she's being recognized. But I would like Brittany Howington to come forward, if she'd come step forward. And she was nominated by our county coroner, who is here tonight, Carla Knight-Dease. And Carla, I happen to recognize, again, talking about another county service that's unique and involves a lot of things, our coroner. But our coroner had a situation where she was out on a call, and there were some puppies left. And so Brittany works at an animal shelter, and our coroner was taking care of the puppies during the late night wee hours. And so she texts Brittany around five thirty in the morning and asked what time someone would be at the shelter so that she could get the animals to the shelter. And so as soon as Brittany awakened, she texts the coroner back and said that she would arrive shortly to the shelter, and she could meet there. And so, of course, when they got there, Brittany was there well before the opening hours of the animal shelter. And Carla met her there. And so certainly, as an employee, before the hours of starting time, she could have had a delay or hold off, but she was willing to accommodate or got there early, and she went the extra mile, as you find many county employees do. And so, but even Brittany took the next step. In addition to just showing up, when actually our shelter was generally full of animals at that time, which is very common, Brittany had already made calls and connections with rescues and had foster care lined up to receive the puppies. And so really, as an unsung hero across many of our unsung heroes, Brittany stands out as our fourth quarter employee of the quarter. And I have a certificate for you to recognize your recognition as employee of the quarter. So congratulations and thank you.
We'll give you one second. We've got plenty of time. All right. Well done. Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. All right, let's move on down. We have a request for installation of the charters of freedom by Mr. Ron Lewis from the Foundation Forward Incorporated. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here, especially to the council chair and the professional staff and all dignitaries and citizens of Lancaster. We are honored and privileged to be here this evening. I'm David Streeter, and this is my friend and colleague, Ron Lewis. And what I'm going to do, I want to kick things off. I'm going to do the hard part, and then I'm going to hand it over to Ron to do the singing and dancing, okay? But anyway, we, we do have a few slides to go over, and we have a very short video, I think, that will not only explain a lot of things, but it will tell you who we are, what we do, how we do it, and why we do it. First of all, though, let me tell you, we do build the charters of freedom, and that consists of the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and we have added the Civil Rights Amendments. And the charters of freedom are very much like what is on display in the rotunda in Washington, D.C. A number of years ago, when I came to work for Foundation Forward, things were just starting to get rolling pretty good. And we were sitting around a conference table, and we were talking about the charters of freedom, and someone called them a monument. Well, being the, the person who likes to dig into things, or why they're called certain things, I said, why are we calling these a monument? And someone says, well, why not? And I said, well, without looking up the literal definition, I know what it means to pay a remembrance or homage to a person or a place or an event that is no longer with us. The charters of freedom, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Civil Rights Amendments are all very much alive and well. So the definition of a monument is not applicable or is appropriate in this case. So we build settings. We call them settings, or a permanent display instead of a monument. So with that, I'm going to go to our next slide. We are a nonprofit, and above anything and everything else, we are an educational nonprofit. We are here about preserving American history and civics. We are not a political organization, and we are not a religious organization. We do encourage everyone to practice the religion of their faith and to also practice their constitutional rights. But we're an educational organization with access, education, and community in mind when it comes to our founding documents. So based on this, what we came up with is that we want easy and open access to our settings. Again, they are consisting of those four main documents that I just mentioned. But our aim is to educate all citizens and to provide them a place to come and look at what our founding documents are in the local community without having to travel all the way to Washington, D.C. We advocate people go to Washington and actually see the original documents. But what we do, people can, can also learn about those right here in our community. So I'm going to ask Ms. Simpson, if she would, to please help us get this video started. And it's about three and a half minutes long. So we'll let you look and enjoy that.
I want to tell you about the principles of Foundation Forward. The number one principle of Foundation Forward is education. No matter what you take from this experience, it all goes back to education. Education on American history, to preserve that history surrounding the time of the founding of our country. Education on government, so all will know how government is meant to serve and protect we, the people. Number two is access. You see, not everyone can get to Washington, to the National Archives. We want to provide access to these founding documents in communities in a proper setting. And number three is community. Having your charters of freedom allows your community a place where they can gather, to celebrate, to honor, and to reflect. People ask us, why are we doing this? And we tell them, yes, it's very expensive, but it's more important than money. We believe it gives us a direct link to our founding fathers by helping to preserve what it is they gave this country, a government to serve and protect we, the people. If you want a monument or a setting to last, you put more underground than above ground. These are not tip-over monuments. Your foundation goes down three and a half feet. It is solid reinforced poured concrete, coming up into a solid reinforced core. Just the core and foundation of the center display weighs over thirty-eight thousand pounds, over nineteen tons. There are six documents displayed. All are life-size, which means the Declaration of Independence is a little larger than the others. Each one is on quarter-inch etched bronze and weighs over sixty pounds. There is a charters of freedom medallion on the front, which is very special. The eagle represents the Declaration of Independence. Proud, bold, defiant. The seven stars above the eagle represent the seven articles of the United States Constitution. The ten stars under the eagle represent the first ten amendments, your Bill of Rights. From the beginning, this has been an education project. We learned we had two founding fathers who were very big on education, Thomas Jefferson and Benjamin Franklin. These two believed that in order to have a free and independent country, you must understand how government works, that you cannot control what you do not understand. Thomas Jefferson, in seventeen eighty-nine, said, "Educate and inform the whole mass of the people. They are the only sure reliance for the preservation of our liberty." And James Madison wrote in eighteen twenty-two, "A people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power knowledge gives." Our hope is that our future leaders will come from communities where they have their own charters of freedom set. That your children will no longer grow up just talking about the Constitution and Bill of Rights in Washington. They'll be talking about their United States Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up right in your own community. My question is, are you ready to be a part of history? Because we're going to dedicate your charters of freedom. It's going to be here for the next three hundred to five hundred years, and your future generations are going to know you were here.
I'm going to hand it over to, to Ron Lewis now. The person who was on the video and doing the commentary was Vance Patterson, and he is our founder. He and his wife are the founder and benefactors of Foundation Forward. So, Ron?
It's great to be in Lancaster County, South Carolina. It's kind of a homecoming for me. On June the fourth, nineteen forty-nine, I, I was born in your hospital, the son of a family of lightheaded from across the river in Great Falls, South Carolina. So it's indeed a distinct pleasure, Mr. Chairman, to, to be in my home county tonight. And thank you for having us. How many of you have been to the National Archives building? That's, that's pretty good. Normally, in a group this size, if I ask that question, about ten percent of the hands go up. That's why we do what we do, is to try to improve on that ratio. If you've been to the National Archives building, you walk through these big bronze gates, and suddenly you're right there where the documents are. Now, you can't do that anymore. We, we were in the National Archives late last summer. We were invited there, so I think they wanted to see what we were up to. But you can't go in the front door except two days of the year. One is the Fourth of July, and the other day or evening is when they have their big gala and invite everyone to come in. The rest of the time, you go in a side entrance and work your way towards the chamber where the documents are. The reason for that is the deterioration of the documents. As hard as our country has worked to preserve the documents, with their age, the material on which they're written in that era, the writing instruments of the day, as hard as we have worked to preserve them, they're, they're getting to the point of where they're not very eligible. This is where we started our organization, on the courthouse in Burke County, North Carolina. The scope of the project was to build duplicates of what is in the National Archives building and place them around the country, as David said, in a visible area, open twenty-four hours a day. We have built twenty-six in North Carolina. There are, there are five that are finished but not dedicated in North Carolina, and there's five under construction. North Carolina has a hundred counties, so we're well underway. Our goal over the next three years is to have a setting in all hundred counties in our home county, in our home state of North Carolina. In our original business plan, we were to go to South Carolina next. Now, the, the rest of the world or the country found out about what we were doing, and we're in eleven other states now, from as far west as, as Nevada, as north as Alaska, and all in between. We're, we're very proud of that. Now, we want to get back to our original business plan, which is to complete North Carolina and come into South Carolina. There are forty-six, as you know, there are forty-six counties in South Carolina. We have one that's finished in Columbia. We have one that is just beginning to be constructed in Georgetown. Now, again, just like North Carolina, our goal over the next few years is to build all forty-six counties. And you are in line to be the first in this northern part of the state, and we're very pleased with that. I covered that. That's what the first one looked like when we got finished with it. That's in Burke County, North Carolina. We put a time capsule in the back. Mr. Chairman, we'd like to have letters from you and your colleagues, and from perhaps the mayor and the superintendent of schools, and just to tell a little bit about what Lancaster is like in two thousand and twenty-three, because that will be opened on September the seventeenth, two thousand and eighty-seven, across the country. Our first one, before and after pictures. This is Asheville, North Carolina, another granite. This is one of, this is the first brick that we built. And that's a park that we have built in Burke County. It's in phase two of this time. That brings me to one of my final points. I was making a presentation not very far from here, in Union County, North Carolina. And I thought it was going to be a breeze, because I had been the county manager there in years before, and I knew everybody that was there. So I finished my presentation, and a young council member looked me in the eye, and he said, Mr. Lewis, you've done a great job, but you haven't done anything for me. And I was kind of caught off guard. Normally, I, I can answer anybody's question that comes up, but I was a little stunned and caught off guard. I went back to our home. I sat down with our, with our staff around the conference table, and I said, we have a problem. This young council member in Monroe, North Carolina, told me point-blank that I didn't do anything for him. I said, we have got, as an organization, we've got to solve that problem. So we put our heads together, and we created a set, a, a, a fourth pedestal, a setting of the Civil Rights Amendments. That's the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, Fifteenth, Nineteenth, and Twenty-Fourth Amendments that make each of us the same under the great Constitution that this country was founded on and is governed by. Now, just a little history lesson. When Thomas Jefferson and James Madison went to Philadelphia, they started out with what's called the Original Virginia Papers. And, and I'm sure, Madam Attorney, you learned about that in law school. But the Original Virginia Papers abolished slavery. Now, when Thomas Jefferson and Madison got there really quickly, they realized that they didn't have the votes. But what they did was brilliant. They put language within the Declaration, within the Constitution that allowed it to be amended from time to time as society changed and as our country changed. So today, we have a complete circle around the Constitution, and we're all the same, with all the same rights and privileges as, as, as all Americans do. And I had the opportunity to go back to Monroe about six months after that experience there. And I presented the council with a framed copy of the amendments, the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, Fifteenth, Nineteenth, and Twenty-Fourth Amendments. The young man who started all this had tears running down his cheek, because we had, based on his comments, we had completed the circle, and now we display for everyone. And, and we're, we're very proud to have made that addition. Now, I want to tell you about what's going on in South Carolina. You will be the first built in this part of the state. However, our organization has put the brakes on my activity in South Carolina. There are some federal people and some strong state people that want all forty-four counties funded before we build another one. Now, I don't think that's going to take years. I think it might take months, which leads me to my last point. As of this day, this is March the, excuse me.
Thirteenth.
March the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, we haven't spent the first tax dollar. That's, that's about to change. It's about to change in North Carolina, and it's about to change in South Carolina. But just as soon as we clear up the discussion that's going on statewide in your beautiful state, we will build the charters of freedom where you tell us to put it, in South Carolina. And I had hoped to, tonight, to be able to say to you, let's start construction next month, Mr. Chairman. But I must put the brakes on and, and, and let the state and national representatives put their heads together and fund the forty-four remaining counties in South Carolina. I hope that you'll understand that and, and be acceptable to that position. So that's the end of my canned presentation. Do you have questions that you would like to ask of us? Anyone have any questions at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I, I love the idea, but I, I, I think I'm going to need a little bit more information about funding, where the funding is going to come from, why is it up for discussion at this moment? And if it was not being discussed at the state level, who would, who would do the funding?
We're a nonprofit. We're a 501(c)(3). And as of this date, as I said in my presentation, we haven't spent the first tax dollar. It's all been publicly raised. It's private money. Now, my choice would have been to come here tonight and tell you, council members, that, that we're going to continue just like we've been going. But with the activity that's currently in place in your state, I have been asked to, to, to tap the brakes and slow down until the funding for all forty-four counties is in place. I, I hope to be back to you within the next couple of months to say that the funding has been in place, and we're prepared to move ahead. But I can't make that commitment tonight to you. I, I, I wish that I could, very much wish that I could. For the first eight years of this organization, I was a treasurer, and I could account for every dollar that was spent. The organization has grown to the point to where I can no longer do that task. It takes a team of accountants to do that now. So that's the best answer, Madam Councilmember, that I can, I can answer. That's the best way I can answer it. I, I hope that, that that's okay.
Well, I guess I'm going to have to wait till you come back.
But you can't outline the rough cost for a project like this, just for their information?
We, we have learned a great deal since the first one that we built. We have, we have about twenty-five thousand dollars of direct cost in each setting. Now, when it's finished, it's, the value of it would be about a hundred thousand dollars. Because that's what I quoted to you, is just the cost of the material. Now, often, that material is even donated. We've had concrete companies that want to donate the concrete, and we, we've had brick masons who want to give their time to, to lay the brick. But if we, my guess is, if we were to build it starting tomorrow, we would, we would spend about twenty-five thousand dollars in our, in our costs to, to build it.
But one of the asks to make sure is that, basically, they do look for land. And so their interest is the high traffic, as they outlined, particularly if there's some county land that they may be interested in. So that would be part of the conversation. And then they have a robust program with the local school district where they engage schoolchildren around all these displays. But the things that we'd come back or look for, some guidance from council, could be if you're interested in moving forward, understanding how they're prepared, if they want to do it with the funding, if you want to go with their funding, where would be a suitable place that you may be interested in going forward with this. So that's the gist of the conversation now, and then we can have you back when you have more information.
Well, thank you so much. I sat in your seat for thirty-eight years, Mr. Manager. I was, in North Carolina, we called you county managers. You're administrators in South Carolina. And thank you for your on-target comments. You, you, you said it as well as it could be said, that once all this is orchestrated, I will come back for a very, very short session to say, well, funding is in place, and we're ready to construct. Fair enough, Mr. Chairman?
That's fair enough.
That's fair enough.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lewis, I first want to thank you in your organization for what you are doing. As someone who comes from a family that didn't appreciate the lessons and the freedoms that they had, I think it is vitally important that we learn from this and that we do educate people and that people do understand the freedoms that we have and why we have the freedoms that we have. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, who will actually, will we have a committee that finds the location for this? Or how would we proceed?
Mr. Chairman, depend upon when they're ready to act or even before. If you're interested, we can bring this back up at a Cal meeting and suggest a couple of existing sites on county property, or if there's some other locations that you would maybe potentially be interested in acquiring, we can talk about that as well.
So will we be choosing one location or several? Okay.
So could you have some recommendations in April? Okay.
Interestingly, your history is rich with Revolutionary War period. There were several major battles fought in Lancaster County. And I know you're all proud of that. It surely warmed my heart when I read about it. And you played a very significant role in the American Revolution. This part of the state, we're not that far from Kings Mountain. We're not that far from Calpins. And the battles that happened, that occurred here, and those two that I just mentioned, really turned the tide and put Cornwallis on the run. And we, as South Carolinians, I'm a native South Carolinian, should be very proud of that. And my seventh great-grandfather fought with Francis Marion in the Low Country of South Carolina. I have just completed all the paperwork necessary to be a sons of the American Revolution. I just learned tonight that you have a young organization that has the young people that are tied to the American Revolution, but right here in your beautiful county. And, Mr. Chairman, I've talked too long. So unless you have further questions, I'm...
I think we're good right now. All right, we look forward to talking to y'all in the next few months. Thank y'all again.
Thank you. Thank y'all again. And just as a conclusion, I have already talked with Ms. Thompson over here at the media table. As the Director of Education for Foundation Forward, I write a monthly article, they're usually very short, about people and events that happened during the Revolutionary War era that made a significant difference in the history of our country and some of the things that we celebrate today. And those are provided to the local media, and whoever wants to use them at no charge. Also complimentary, as one of my duties, hopefully, we will get to a point where we can provide those complimentary education materials that we create and share with the local school system, as many as they would like, as often as they would like, to hand down to the teachers. Then that they bring these things to use, not only on experiential field trips to the setting, but they can also be used independently in the classroom as well. And that's things that we'll be glad to talk about in the future and provide those things both to the media and to the school system.
Right. Thank you. Let's move on down to our next presentation. Is a Community Needs Assessment Public Hearing Review of Community Needs List and Prioritization of Community Needs for the 2023 and Review of Upcoming Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Opportunities. Ms. Grazer Ray, Community Development Director, Catawba Regional Council of Governments.
We have on virtually tonight, so we're using our technology that we've upgraded in the chambers, and Ms. Grazer Ray is here to join us, and she has some PowerPoints to lead us through. So Grazer, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Great, okay. Well, thank you for having me, and I understand we're the guinea pig to do this tonight, but it looks like it's working okay, I guess. And technology is pretty amazing now, things that we learned that we can do during the pandemic. First of all, before I get into the CDBG and y'all's needs list, I want to say that y'all do have a Citizens Participation, Citizen Participation Plan, which states that anytime you have a CDBG project or application, there are several hearings that you have to have. One is the Needs Assessment Hearing, which we're doing tonight. Then you will have a hearing to review any application that you may want to submit. And then during the project, once it gets funded, if there are any major changes, we have to have a hearing to talk about the changes. And then at the end of the project, we have a closeout hearing. So as I said, this is a Needs Assessment Hearing, and all those hearings have to be either advertised in the paper for seven days prior to the hearing or posted for ten days prior to the hearing. That's changed a little bit. Before, you had to put it in the paper. But now, the state just let us know a couple of weeks ago that we can actually post instead of putting it in the paper. Although, y'all probably want to put it in the paper so you'll cover everything in Lancaster County. But we can talk about that later. The other thing I want to mention is that Fair Housing Month is coming up. It's in April. Catherine Fernd is on here with me, and she'll be sending some things to Sherry for y'all to do to support fair housing during April. Y'all always pass a proclamation, put it on your website, and do some other things. So Lancaster County does support fair housing, and that will be coming up in April. So now we can get into the, I'm going to talk about the CDBG program first, the Community Development Block Grant Program. And Sherry, I don't know if you're going to put up some slides, or am I supposed to do that?
They're up. Sherry will go ahead and look at the answers for you.
Great, perfect. Well, the CDBG is, as y'all know, the Community Development Block Grant Program. And it is a HUD Housing and Urban Development Program. And Lancaster County has had several of these projects over the years. In fact, the most recent one that you completed was the DSS Building renovation. But you've done a lot of water and sewer projects and some upgrade, a lot of upgrades, actually, in the Brooklyn Avenue area and some other projects around the county. So it's been a great program for Lancaster County. In South Carolina, the Housing and Urban Development HUD funds are funneled through the Department of Commerce. So we actually answer to the Department of Commerce, who in turn answers to HUD. And as you know, these are competitive projects. We have to make sure we have a good, complete, and compelling application. So that's why we work hard with y'all and your staff to do that. We can also design, let's see, we can, these are for economic development opportunities as well as meeting community revitalization needs, particularly with low and moderate income. You can apply, only the local governments can apply, towns, cities, counties, such as Lancaster County. And we cannot be within an entitlement area. We cover four counties, and the only entitlement area in the four counties is the city of Rock Hill. They are not eligible for these funds because they are under another CDBG program that's called the Entitlement Program. And all projects must meet a national objective and address an eligible activity. National objectives are benefit to low and moderate income persons, or LMI. Second is aid and prevention or elimination of slums or blight. And third is to meet other urgent and community development needs. Most of our projects do fall under the LMI benefit. Y'all did do a demolition of, I think it's, yes, I know it's finished. It was a demolition of vacant and dilapidated houses. That came under the prevention of, or eliminations of slums or blight. And then there are different things about the Community Development Program. As I said, they're competitive. They are offered twice a year. We're getting ready to submit the ones for the spring. We have application requests actually due the end of this week. And those are for all for infrastructure, which is water, sewer, roads. Then in the fall, which is, we have application requests due in August and applications due in September. Those are for all the other programs. There's a minimum of $50,000, and the maximum depends on what type of project. There's always a 10% match required. And there must be, as I said before, it has to be an eligible activity and meet a national objective. There are actually six program categories. Community Infrastructure, Community Enrichment, Neighborhood Revitalization, Local Priorities, Ready-to-Go, Public Facilities, and Business Development. The funds are available statewide right now are $10.9 million, and the grant maximum is $1 million. And this is under the Community Infrastructure. This has gone up. It was $750,000 for infrastructure, and it's gone up to $1 million, which we're happy about that. As I said before, water, sewer, roads are drainage for activities, and those applications are due in April. The Community Enrichment is what we can apply for in the fall. That's the one we just finished for the DSS Building. It also funded a demolition project. The funds available statewide are $3 million. The grant maximum is $750,000. That's gone up from $500,000. So they've increased that also. Those application requests are due in August, and the applications are due in September. We can do several things under this program. One is brownfields projects or demolition of obsolete buildings. We're doing a couple of mill clearances right now, one in Great Falls, in fact, and one in Jonesville. And we've done several others around the region. Then we can do downtown streetscape projects where there's significant business activity. Those are mainly for towns instead of counties, towns or cities. The city of Lancaster actually did about three of those to upgrade the different times that they upgraded Main Street in Lancaster. Second priority is education and workforce development. We can do library facilities where there's going to be training for job, networking for jobs or training. We can do publicly owned facilities that offer educational opportunities to adult, for adult literacy, or to serve at-risk, low and moderate income youth. We can do transportation-oriented public facilities, public facilities and services in LMI areas such as police substations or fire substations or fire trucks. We actually did a sheriff's substation as part of the Brooklyn Avenue project a while ago. That was in the 15th Street building. I know y'all are very familiar with that. We can also do a demolition of vacant and dilapidated residential structures. That's what we've talked about that y'all have. We can do health clinic facilities or equipment in underserved areas. We can do public facilities, modifications to ensure accessibility for disabled persons. And this is new. We can do sidewalks in LMI areas where there's a demonstrated need for safe neighborhood traffic and that it will connect the area to goods and services. So that is new, but it does have to be new sidewalks. Then there's the Neighborhood Revitalization. That's what funded the Brooklyn Avenue project. And the funds available statewide is $1 million. That grant maximum is $750. Applications are due there again in September. There has to be a plan in place. When y'all did the Brooklyn Avenue project, we could get CDBG funds to do the plan. Those funds are not available anymore, so you'll have to pay to have a plan. And it has to be in a low and moderate income neighborhood. And those, as y'all can probably recall, those of you who were around when we did the Brooklyn Avenue New Area, those are for multiple activities within the project. I think the first phase, we did some streetscape. We did some sidewalk sliding, water. And I don't think we did sewer, but I know we did water. And that's when we did the police or the sheriff's substation. The second phase, we actually did some more of the same things and added a park also. So you can do multiple activities. And the next one is the Ready-to-Go Project. Excuse me, no, the Local Priorities. This used to be the Special Projects Program category. And this, we have a $1 million statewide. $300,000 is the grant maximum. That's gone up from $250,000. And those applications are also due in September. These are for different sort of projects. In fact, I think the town of He Springs is talking about doing maybe their city park with this in the fall. We're doing a pavilion behind City Hall and for a farmer's market in the city of Chester. Just different sort of projects. But it does have to serve at least 51% low and moderate income. We actually tried to use this program for the Lindsey Pettis Greenway, but we couldn't identify a low and moderate income area that nobody else would walk in. So that was the challenge. So there are some challenges with it, but we can work through those if you have any different sort of projects you might want to do. The Ready-to-Go Public Facilities is, there's $600,000 statewide and a grant maximum $500,000. This project category is for anything that's eligible under the infrastructure or community infrastructure or community enrichment programs. There might be a project that comes up during the year that doesn't fit within when we can apply for it. But the big thing about it is, you have to be completely ready to go to bid. All the engineering has to be done and completed. All of the permits have to be obtained, and you have to really be ready to go to bid. The other thing about this program is that you can only pay for construction. There's no engineering or, well, I guess the admin fees in there, but no engineering, you can just do construction. And then there's the Business Development Program. This is not during, there's not a particular time that you can do this. You can do it anytime during the year. The funds available statewide is $2 million. Grant maximum is based on jobs or job creation or retention. It's $10,000 per job. And this actually comes through your Economic Development Department. What happens is, a company might be coming to Lancaster County. They sit down with your folks in the Economic Development Department, and then they go to the Department of Commerce and say, "Where do you think we can get this money from?" They normally will sit down with CDBG, Rural Infrastructure Authority, Coordinating Council, State Revolving Loan Fund, all those agencies, and they'll decide where best is to get the money from. So we usually find out about those after the state's already decided, "Okay, CDBG is the best part, the best place for this funding." And to tell you the truth, in fact, Lancaster County got several of these in the past. We used to do a lot all over our region, but they now save their money. As you see, there's only $2 million statewide. They really save the money to be part of some bigger concerns. So we usually don't do much with that. And like I said earlier, there is a 10% grant match required. This can be in cash, non-commerce grants, waiver of fees, public or private investment, undocumented volunteer or in-kind services. We've done things on, like waiving fees can be part of that. We also can do, well, one thing that we have done with some other projects, we have partnered CDBG with the South Carolina State Rural Infrastructure Authority, and one can be used to match the other, which has worked out really well with some projects, infrastructure projects. In fact, we're doing that right now for He Springs. They're finishing up their wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And we really needed to partner those two funding sources in order to have enough money. But the nice thing was that they were able to, the REA funds could match the CDBG and vice versa. So that was great. So that is a very quick lowdown and run-through of the CDBG program. Are there any questions at this point?
No, I guess.
No, I guess.
Go ahead, Ms. McGreev.
Hey, Grazer.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
I'm good. Just a few questions to bring us up to date with the CDBG grant. How many current projects do we have underway?
You don't have, the only one you have is the planning grant. Y'all, in fact, that was one thing I wanted to ask you. Lancaster County has been very kind to be the lead county for the planning grant that's for the whole region. Now, you do have, well, you do have, I don't know if that's through the RPA. Catherine, you know the one that... Catherine, you know, the one that that Chris is doing that with the, but I don't think that is not a CDBG. That is.
Yeah, I don't think so. That's current of virus funds.
But no, Ms. McGriff, we, y'all do not have any right now, which is why we were trying to drum up some business. So hopefully, y'all, we can come up with something for the fall.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking that we could no longer, we couldn't have any more than three projects underway at any given time. So with, and I know the ARPA funding is doing some of the things like with the brownfield cleanup in certain areas. I know Lancaster is getting some of that money. But I, what I need to know, and I'm sure the opportunity zone here in District 2, 107 and 108 will qualify for some of these funds. Am I correct?
For the ARPA funds?
No, for the CD.
The CDBG? Yeah, yeah. Well, it still depends on, and I'm sure with those, in fact, I know those those, they they actually don't go by opportunity zones as far as qualifying. They go by HUD's definition of low modern income. But I'm pretty sure it's through the census information and I'm sure those are. So if we can identify something within those, I know 107 and 108, isn't that the Brooklyn Avenue area?
Yes, yes. It's over in the Brooklyn Avenue over a little bit around South Side in that area. But, you know, I know those are two areas. But what I guess what I want to know from Dennis is that do we have any projects that could qualify for some of these? Have we discussed projects or have some pending projects that we could use some of this funding for?
We're on the front end of that conversation is why we're having this tonight, so we can talk about some of those, some of the things you did here. Maybe a sheriff's substation or some other things I think are of interest. But again, in the LMI, the low modern income area is some of the barriers for us for some of these projects. And so really now we're at the point where we've got to start making some decisions about what is some things we want to go for. So this is a front in the conversation that we have to have wrapped up come fall, as Fraser was saying. So we can bring a list, but initially I wanted to hear some things once you understood the parameters, if there's some things on council members' minds.
Yeah, we 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 have our January 2022 top three or four that we usually put the most pressing ones at the top. So I'm wondering, any of those and and priority needs one? Have any of those been completed, Grazer, like the King Circle, Kershaw Mill, Dawson School, Emerald Estate?
No, in fact, one thing, you know, as you know, we tried to do the Emerald Estates area and we, the problem was we didn't get income surveys. And we also found out there weren't really, it might not have been as much of a need as we thought it was. And the Kershaw Mill area, the same thing. We we've tried a couple of different times also to do that area. But there again, we didn't get enough income surveys. That's been a real, and it's not just Lancaster County, it's 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 universal. It's it's really difficult to get income surveys. But anyway, we can certainly try again, but but none of those have been done.
Yeah, I know that Emerald Estates because, you know, I worked that pretty and wasn't able to do it. And the the areas that needed, we can't get the income forms, y'all. And if you understand what I'm saying, in order to qualify, you've got to get a certain percentage from the community to fill out those income forms. That won't, that's not happening. But I do want to focus on on number two, Dennis, to demolish the vacant, dilapidated structure in low and modern income neighborhoods. I think that to me is a real need. And that, and we may be able to do some because we can't really get those income surveys to even qualify for some of these other projects.
Well, and that that's the one that y'all finished last year. Y'all had one going. And so that, you know, we we can certainly see if there's some other areas. There again, the the thing about those those projects, we still need to do income surveys, but it doesn't, it doesn't knock you out if it's if it's not 51%. But it, we still have to do income surveys unless it's in a, if we can identify with, which there again, it's hard to identify a perfect little census tract or block group area that fits within a neighborhood. It usually kind of goes out. That's when you have to do the income surveys. That's what was nice about the, in fact, that's how we did the your last project because it was in the Brooklyn Avenue. It was in those tracts 107 and 108. So that's how we qualified those.
And you didn't have to get the income surveys?
No, we did not. So that's what we need to concentrate on. And we'll we'll work with your staff to see if there are any other areas like that that might fall within some of the census tracts that are low modern income.
Okay.
Now, is it from this presentation, is it two opportunities to apply for grants? One's coming up right now that we seem to be late for, and then the one in the fall time?
Right. The one right now is for infrastructure and the one in the fall is everything else. And we did not know any infrastructure projects. But and you know, one thing the county's done in the past, y'all have partnered with the city of Rock Hill and and the town of Kershaw to to especially, I'm sorry, not Rock Hill, the city of Lancaster, where there've been some areas in the county that were served by their water and sewer. And so the county applied on their behalf to get those projects done. So that that is, I don't, you know, I, we haven't really identified any more areas, but there might be that we could, I mean, there again, it's too late now, but to talk about for next year. Because you, as you said, Ms. McGriff, we can, we can have up to three projects going on. So you could apply for one, one or even two in the fall. In the fall, if you had a, if you had a, if you're in two different programs, like if you had a community enrichment, that might be a, I don't know, just say that was a demolition. And then if you wanted to do a special projects, that was something else, you could actually apply for two of them, since they're two different programs.
And I will say with the infrastructure, it is kind of a two-pronged approach because as she referenced, the Rural Infrastructure Authority has grant applications out where we've applied for some of those, some of our stormwater projects and some other things. So once we're still, we were a little delayed on hearing from them. They had hoped to make their announcement two to three weeks ago. But potentially some of those projects could roll in to these. But trying to figure out if they qualify, if we don't get the other funding. So we're kind of playing a little weight game on some of the stormwater infrastructure projects. But again, we're looking at what other options there may be out there.
I got a question.
Yeah. What obligations or requirements are placed on the county in connection with these grants or federal funds?
You have to, well, of course, I don't know if this will answer. There's, there's a list of things that you say that you're going to do. One is you have to have an audit, a single, whatever it's called, the the special audit that you y'all do anyway. Of course, we handle all the accounting part of it. We make it as easy as possible for you. And it, a lot of times what's happened when y'all partnered with the city of Lancaster, they've actually, they've actually covered the match. Y'all did cover the match and and then and then a lot more, not then some, but a lot more for the DSS building, y'all. Y'all did. But that's one thing, I think y'all have already, have y'all, y'all already have upgraded your, wasn't the health department in with DSS before? We redid that building?
There were some improvements, yes.
Yeah. So the health department is is on, is in another building now. Is that right?
Yeah, the health is in the Barnett building.
So it's, it doesn't need any, any work?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that could be, that can, that's eligible. I mean.
You mean, you mean the Barnett building or the building, the DSS building?
Well, we, y'all, we've already done the DSS.
DSS building, so you're talking about the health department.
Right. I'm talking about the health.
We do.
The other thing, another, another activity that you can do is make buildings like that energy efficient or ADA accessible. If you, if y'all have any, it can't be like the the building you're in now, which you probably don't need to anyway. But it needs to be a county owned building that you might, I don't know if there's something at your recreation department or some of those other things. Now, we have talked with, I have talked with your recreation director about some potential things there because parks and those sort of things are eligible too. Those will be in the fall. So, you know, like Mr., you know, like y'all mentioned before, we, we, this is kind of the beginning and kind of brainstorming about what 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 y'all would like to do. And what, and I I know you have the list of items here. I don't know if we want to go over those now to see if you still want to keep these on there or if you want some other ones on there.
When do, when do you need this, Grazer? Because it it comes to us and, you know, we just, we look at it at this meeting and it's it's like it comes to us once a year. I think we need to have a discussion around this, at least what we can and cannot do with these funds. Because I'm sure I have always had questions and I'm on the Cataba cog and I still have questions.
You know, I would be happy to come and meet with y'all in a work session, something like that, to kind of go over. And then that way you could take this, there's not a rush on it since you're not going to be applying until the fall. So we can certainly, you know, discuss all, let y'all look at the list and then we can, you know, have a meeting and talk about it and go more in depth and maybe kind of iron out some things.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Grazer, this local priorities program, I know we, you talked about the the greenways and stuff, that didn't work there. But this historic preservation, is there anything that our our historic commission could do for its funds for everything they do of all this historic stuff in Lancaster? We also have on Gay Street, there are revitalization going on there. They're redoing everything down through there, trying to make this neighborhood better and fixing to put a, thinking about buying some property and putting in an amphitheater down there. And their old jail into it and their old library into it. It's a whole big Gay Street right in town there. Any funds in that local stuff?
Is that a low and modern income area?
It is.
I thought it was. We, what I need to do is see if y'all can maybe, let me, let me look at, maybe some, a well, and you know, another thing, okay, is that in the city or outside the city? Okay, you know, what we could do, maybe, I'd have to, I'd have to do some research on it. But the city of Lancaster is over 51% low and modern income. So if we could do something that we said was going to be citywide benefit and y'all could still, because obviously the county, the city is in the county. So y'all could, y'all could apply on their behalf. And I know they have kind of projects lined up right now. But so y'all could apply or something like that.
We have some county buildings in this area, you know, because our old jail and and our old library and stuff is why I'm asking for the county end of it. It's just going to be a good area down in there once this gets done.
One thing we have found, because we we have never been able to qualify to anything under this historic preservation because it's, it's hard to show how you want, you know, how you want to serve low and modern income people. But but there again, if it's a citywide benefit, we we just need to talk about that. And and I can certainly call and and kind of flesh out some of the things with the state too. But some of those, some of those ideas are very good, just do do some different sort of things.
All right. Any more questions?
So would y'all like to, well, I'll let y'all decide, you know, if you want, if you want us to come and sit down with y'all another time after y'all have time to look at it, we would be happy to do that.
We have a COW meeting sometime.
Yeah, well scheduled.
I think, I think that would be good, Grazer, because it's a lot of projects that I think we could do. It's just that, right, we just don't know what we can apply for. And if you could give us some information on, like Billy said, the the project he was talking about, see whether we could find projects like that that we may not know about. And I think you will be able to guide us.
Okay, so that's a good, that's a good plan. And then we could, then we could finalize the list at that time. And then at that point, once you finalize the list, it just goes back to council for y'all to just formally approve it. So y'all put your thinking caps on and just, you know, and there's like, in fact, I was trying to think of something. If you could partner with Heat Springs even, Heat Springs is 51% low and modern income. And I'm pretty sure Kershaw is too. So if there's something that we could do in some of those areas that the county could apply on their, on their behalf.
Dennis, do you meet with the city of Lancaster, Heat Springs to go over this priority list and see whether there's some things that they need or we could apply on their behalf?
We have, excuse me, we have talked with Lancaster probably six months ago, not as formal with Heat Springs and their transition. But again, we do have our list that we are starting from, as she's talking about some of the projects on there. Some of them, it's hard to make them qualify or fit into the the criteria. So we do have a list. So when we come back, if we do this at a COW meeting, potentially this summer or May, that we'll start from that list and then see, we'll do some exploration we're talking about for historic preservation, some other things. But yeah, I can have those conversations with the other jurisdictions.
And one thing I'll tell y'all, we, because we normally, we're doing so many projects now. We try to make sure we get everything we need for the next kind of round. So we'll probably want to be identifying projects in, you know, by June, by probably in the middle of June. So just to let you know, of course, that's still a few months away, so we're, we're, we're good. So any other questions or comments then?
Now, we do have a public hearing on this. It is time, would any citizens like to speak on the Lancaster County our community needs list and prioritization? I see no one would like to speak. We will now, we will no longer be in a public hearing. Anything else?
But thank y'all so much for having us and hopefully y'all could see and hear. So we will, are glad to come, do it this way or in person, because it's always nice to see y'all in person too.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on down to our final special presentation or update on the proposed new detention center project and project cost. We have Sheriff Barry fail and Mr. Chad Catlidge.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Thank you again for your service to our community and the opportunity for us to serve you through this project. Tonight I have with me Frank Randall, part of our architectural team. Through previous updates, we've talked through our program and activities. We've shown you some preliminary schematic design drawings. Tonight we'll present to you what we would consider our final schematic design level drawings and a budget that would rest with you until you're satisfied that we can move forward with the project at the current budget level. I'm going to have Frank kind of walk us through our drawings. On the screen, you'll have a updated site plan that we've been massaging a little bit. We'll walk through that in front of you are three sheets of the plan you can look at. We didn't put those on the screen. They're getting to a point where sensitive information just don't want to float in the community. So when we get to the plans, if you'll open those up and we'll put up.
Good evening, everybody. Just walk you through a little bit on the site plan that you see in front of you as to what we were able to do to help reduce the budget for this project. Around the perimeter of the building, we Around the perimeter of the building, we originally had, uh, two lines of, uh, security fencing, uh, going around the perimeter of the building. It serves, of course, two functions. One is to, you know, if any inmates do happen to get out of the building, uh, they can't, uh, completely escape. They'll be, uh, inside that fence line, can't get past it. But, it also gives extra space between somebody on the public side of the fence from getting too close to the building and potentially, uh, sending in contraband into the outdoor exercise areas, which are requirement of the, uh, South Carolina Jail Code. Now, those outdoor exercise areas, they are covered with a security mesh. So, uh, anybody that, uh, for example, I've heard that the people will cut open a tennis ball, insert drugs inside the tennis ball and use one of those tennis ball guns to lob a tennis ball over and into the outdoor exercise area. So, with that security mesh over the top, that prevents that. And then, uh, since we don't need that amount of space, then, uh, because of that, we could tighten up the, uh, security fence closer to the building. In the original plan with the two security fence lines, we had nearly a mile of security fence going around that building. Now, with our outdoor exercise area, it has a security mesh. We can reduce it down to just one fence line, bring it in tighter to the building. And that almost cuts in half the amount of fence that we need. But, does a second thing for us. It also, uh, reduces the amount of area that we have to create, a level area for, um, uh, the pad outside and for the building. And that reduces the amount of grading that we need for this project and saves quite a bit. Over towards the right side, where we have the, uh, future magistrate's office planned, uh, is the employee parking. Uh, we originally had that a little bit further south on the site, out of the, uh, building pad area for the magistrate's office. Uh, but now we've moved that, uh, parking lot up into the future magistrate's area. And what that allows us to do is, uh, reduce the amount of grading. Where the parking lot was at is there's a little bit of a knoll, uh, right there. So, shifting that parking lot helps us to, uh, save on the grading and not have to take that knoll down at this point. We can leave that for the, uh, the future project. In addition for grading, we are also able to raise the building pad a little, up a little bit, uh, and save. It gave us the opportunity to, and assure us that we can take and run a sanitary line, uh, out to the highway. That we would have enough fall for it. But, it was a little bit questionable whether we can also, um, handle the future expansion and still have it drained by gravity all the way out towards the street. Something that we just learned this past, uh, Thursday is there is a property off to the, uh, uh, west on the site, that belongs to Lancaster County, just on the other side of the stream. And so, since it belongs to Lancaster County, we can, uh, potentially run that sanitary line just down the hill, across the stream and connect into an existing, uh, manhole down there. So, uh, we're still evaluating that, but it looks like, uh, going downhill like that, we could all kill two birds with one stone and, uh, handle the future expansion, um, that way.
Chad, that laser don't show up on there, does it?
Chad, do you have anything that you want to add to the site plan?
Not necessarily on the site. Here we, sorry, I can say, get into somebody in here. Uh, here's the first floor plan for our detention center. Back when we, uh, presented the plan back around in, uh, December or so, that plan was largely, uh, space program for the, uh, Alan Richardson, uh, with Justice Planners, created a very detailed space program, if you recall, uh, listing every space that, uh, you would need inside the jail. And, uh, that was the main priority, was taking that space program, translating it into a plan. And the budget came in second place, close second place, but still, uh, second place. We did take the space program and, uh, with an eye on the budget. And we did take out some of the low hanging fruit, uh, not save money. For example, uh, this space program, uh, called up for, uh, four hundred and fifty-six beds for the facility. But, that was the projections throughout the year twenty-fifty. Obviously, you don't want to necessarily want to build out that far into the future and then have empty beds, empty beds around for, you know, approximately ten, fifteen years before you get around to using it. Somebody set the target of around three hundred and twenty. And then you also had a program classroom space. Alongside the, inside the, by each of the dayroom areas, we do have a multi-purpose room that can be used for programs, whether it's rotations, you know, GED, i-class, that kind of thing. By eliminating those classrooms, it does two things for us. Uh, what, it keeps, you know, having to transfer inmates down the corridor to these classrooms. And a larger classroom, you're potentially also introducing, uh, a mix of inmates that, uh, could present security problems. So, that was one of the other low hanging fruits that we took out of the space program. And I would come forward to today and, uh, this plan we're presenting to you here tonight, uh, the budget is the priority. And so, we took the plans that we had, that we produced back in December, did some rearranging, uh, shaking bed space around to each of the dayrooms, to make them more even. And what that did for us is it allowed us to, uh, clean up the outside perimeter, where as the plan had a lot of reasons, helps accommodate the space program. By shifting bed space around, we were able to clean up the exterior of the building, uh, make it more uniform and consistent, uh, with a cleaner shape. And that helps us to, uh, introduce into, uh, a precast tilt-up construction, uh, which is more accountable. And so, to, uh, as a measure of, uh, uh, I don't believe it, uh, this was, uh, as a measure of, uh, on the second floor, there's one key change, largely, uh, this is the administrative area of the building on the second floor. The key change that we did is the fence here is grayish-green, as we introduced in a, uh, on courtroom, along with a, uh, solicitor's and public defender's office. And we recently made a trip to, uh, New Hanover County. A lot of things that they said that they absolutely love is having a solicitor or a defender, uh, in the building, along with the courtroom and magistrate's office.
And now I guess I can be recorded. And what that helps to do is helps process the inmates through more quickly. Uh, and so, the ones that can be released, uh, can be released sooner, uh, that frees up bed space for those inmates, uh, that need to, uh, to, to stay. What that helps you do, uh, in the future is, uh, as you, uh, get to the point where you would have had to start thinking about expanding onto the building, uh, by reducing the average length of stay, you're actually kicking that can a little bit further down the road. So, instead of, say by, you know, considering around twenty thirty-five or twenty forty, uh, it, it will, uh, hopefully project that out a little bit further into the twenty forties before you might be looking at, at expanding again. Same with those multi-purpose rooms. By having programs there that, uh, can help the, uh, the inmates, it helps reduce the, uh, not for everybody, but it does help reduce, uh, one's repeat offenders from coming back into the jail. And again, uh, saving you on bed space, except for those that really need it and are repeat offenders. So, with that, I'll open up to.
Any questions about the plan? We'll talk about budget in just a minute.
Chad, did you want to speak to the bail reform law that's potentially going on and what that might do to impact length and duration?
Well, the, the bail reform that we've been talking about did pass the House, I think it's in the Senate now. And what that will do is they're projecting to increase the population at the jail by about twenty percent. It will require some cash bonds. I think there's an amendment being put in about electronic monitoring, that they will allow, that anybody out on a violent crime bond, commits another violent crime, either won't get a bond or have some type of cash bond that they'll have to put up.
What's the name of this bill, uh, Sheriff?
Bail Reform Thirty-Five and a Half. I got it right here and I'll give you a copy. Thirty-five, thirty-two.
That's in the House?
Well, I think the House is passing.
It's in the Senate now, that.
Thank you.
Chad, um, could you show us, uh, where down the road, if we need additional space, we would be building on?
Yes, I can do it this way here. Uh, so if we're looking at our sites, it's how, uh, uh, here. We have two entrances to the property. Uh, our, uh, main lobby entrance, uh, inmates sign for areas are here. Uh, this is our housing, yes, uh, property. It's quite controlled this way. By addition space, we need to continue that, uh, ethically. Good thing is, uh, all the space we planted over there, built from a core of, uh, the, uh, four hundred and ninety, like, four hundred and fifty-six beds, quarters beds, whichever kitchens, lot, you just got that. So, no additions needed for those. Uh, we've got three hundred and twenty-nine beds, so we can have another hundred and fifty bed-ish pods, in, in pod format down here. So, that's good, each of our pods is average thirty to forty beds. So, take those thirty to forty beds and clip it if you like, uh, some future council. Uh, it's a good scenario.
And if you did expand, would it require additional sewage? Would it be able to tap on what, what y'all are already planning on building now?
I think, uh, I would find, uh, we, we can, uh, 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 we can, uh,
I've got a question, Bear, Chad, one of y'all. Far as fire extinguishers, I mean, your water supply for the hydrants, you know, the fire extinguishers and the ceilings and stuff. Are you going to have enough water pressure, water volume for that system? Are there big enough a line coming into that area?
There will be. Included in our project budget under sort of our project cost line item is extension of a twelve-inch water line from five-twenty-one and nine intersection down to our place.
Down to our place, good. So I know there wasn't that big of a line out that way. I saw. I know there was some issues when the old jail was built years and years ago. They ran into a problem then, but I just didn't want to surrender any kind of issues.
So we'll tiptoe into our budget. Before I get into our specific budget, I will tell you, over the past couple of weeks, we've ran through several scenarios trying to get the budget down below, at least below ninety million as a project budget. One of the scenarios that we ran through were reevaluating a study that was done in twenty-eighteen on an addition to the existing facility. Some schematic level drawings done back in twenty-eighteen, some costs to that. We reevaluated that and looked. Just to remind everyone of what it would take to bring that facility up to current speed, the core spaces that are existing there now are grossly undersized. So it'll be a complete addition and renovation of all the core spaces. The maximum number of beds we could add on to the available property there is one-hundred-and-eighty beds with no room for expansion. And the staffing needs because of the inefficiencies of an addition still utilizing the existing facility, the staffing needs would be greater per inmate than the new facility simply because of the inefficiencies of the space and how you'd have to operate there. And so, in our opinion, the overall cost of an addition that caps you at one-hundred-and-eighty plus one-twenty, so three hundred beds on that property forever, gets within ten percent of this new facility. Our recommendation would be the same they made in twenty-eighteen, continue with a new structure and not an addition. But to speak to our structure, we met with you two weeks ago. Our total project budget was sitting just over ninety-six million dollars. Over the past couple of weeks, we finalized a lot of work that we've been working on for several months in presenting you with some options to get us down below ninety million. And I'll show you that pathway in our recommendation today. I won't spend a lot of time on each one of these, but feel free to ask questions as we go through. As Frank mentioned, going through his plan, we reevaluated the geometries of the structure and the architecture and created some efficiencies. Meanwhile, we also evaluated our CM and architectural fees. Were able to create a one-point-three-million-dollar deduct based on simply efficiencies. We're a little further in the project, so we were able to reduce our anticipated escalation and contingency funds down a little bit. As Frank mentioned, because of the simpler geometry, so we can introduce tilt wall with a steel framing, brought the project down another million dollars. Earlier on, we had a connector for inmates over to the future magistrate's court. At this time, just not knowing what the future holds for the magistrate's structure, separate structure, we took that component out. The next two line items are available to us, and I'm showing them in our recommendation. However, if there were anything on this list that I'm going to really, really try to keep and put back in this budget, it's these next two, reducing the dayroom sizes in our male admissions and dorm housing. The concern, well, the opportunity comes in that this square footage reduction gets us down to minimum standards by the Department of Corrections and allows, and we're still in compliance. The downside is our sightlines from the security station becomes a little less. And so, we want to try to work that back into the space. Just going down the list, on our second level, we had planned, and in current budget has a pre-cast exterior structure. We believe we can do that in light gauge framing with metal insulated panels on the outside and have a little cost savings. We reduced the number of skylights. There were skylights throughout the dayrooms and housing pods. We took those out and our next line tried to help compensate for that loss of sunlight. In our activity yards outside, which are concrete walls, we lowered the exterior concrete wall about four feet and put in a mesh to allow sunlight to come through. Were able to get some more firm price on our kitchen and laundry room equipment based over what we had in our budget, so we saved some money there. The next two are regarding the site. By raising the building elevation, we're able to eliminate a sanitary lift station we had planned. And then by raising the site and eliminating quite a bit of grading, as you can see, that's probably a million-dollar line item we've saved. Light and protection system, not necessarily required by code, we took that out. We had a couple of electric vehicle charging stations. This is really center stage for the future should the sheriff's department start to[523.12][523.15]integrate electric vehicles. But it's probably far enough in the future, we just removed it at this point. We reduced a gate and all the controls that would be between the existing sheriff's office and detention center. There was a double gate airlock situation, or Sallyport situation, and we reduced that down to one gate at that one location. Our fencing, we reduced to a ten-foot height. We had our budget earlier with a twelve-foot height. And as Frank mentioned, we've been able to reduce our fencing by tightening up the exterior perimeter around the building. And our last recommended VE item, we're using tube railing as opposed to a mesh in our mezzanines. And so that gets us a total VE of just six-point-seven million and down to our eighty-nine-and-a-half million-dollar budget.
Chad, could you explain that reducing the, what do you call it, the day?
Dayroom.
Dayroom. How would you reduce it down?
So what we would do is simply bring the width in. Frank, do you remember how much we were reducing that in width?
In some cases, we can reduce that dayroom width down by about another six feet or so. What that does, what that does to you is it, on the upper level, we've also have cells, and out in front of those cells is a five-foot walkway. And so when you reduce that dayroom width down, now that walkway starts to approach the opposite wall, and now the view from the housing control room starts to become more of just like a little slot that you can view the dayroom down below. And it really does, in some cases, heavily restrict the control room officer's view of the dayroom and hampers his ability to, honestly, to do his job. Some dayrooms aren't quite as bad, but it still reduces the vision and raises some security concerns.
So you couldn't bring it back toward that officer, you'd have to do it?
We have to do it in width, because if we bring it back, we lose beds.
Yeah. So that, that would be a little bit harder to, from a security standpoint. And the other thing that I don't quite understand is the double gates at the Sallyport. Are we, are we giving up some security by doing that? You know, you sit here and you, I want a nice bicycle for Christmas, but I really don't want to step down to this level. You know, I want something that's, that's nice enough that I know is going to get me what I want to do. So are we hurting ourselves from a security standpoint?
So a double gate is certainly more secure than a single gate. We still have our double gate where our inmates will always be entering and exiting the facility. The double, other double gate where we've left a single gate is just simply between the sheriff's office and the detention center. So the only traffic in that area would be sheriff staff.
As long as, as long as we think that's secure, I just.
The one, you know, there's all kinds of scenarios on what could happen. Only thing on there I really think that you need to look at is that very bottom one where you had using tube railing instead of mesh. I can just see opportunities for a twelve-inch opening with people slinging stuff down at people on the lower level or a fight breaking out and somebody trying to smash their head between two rails. With a fence, all you're going to do if you're a mesh is, it just don't seem like there would be an opportunity to be more secure, I would think. I don't know. I mean, y'all are the experts. Just wanting to make sure that that's something that the man behind you is comfortable with because he, they'll be the ones securing it.
If I had my rather, I would rather go with the mesh.
That's what I mean, I mean, for security.
You're going to have to cut. We have to take it somewhere.
I know.
That would be, one thing we'd go to is to, as far as the double fence, same.
Okay.
We would rather have the two.
I, I'm just thinking of the security of officers on that one. I don't know, y'all, y'all the experts.
The problem with that, sir, is even with the tubing or the mesh, anything can be through through mesh because we have mesh windows and cells now, and inmates regularly throw stuff.
Okay, all right.
And we put in the tubing close enough, it's going to be very hard to get somebody through the tubing.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure you'll be secure.
If, if we go back to adding back some of this, what would be your first priority, Captain Deason and Sheriff?
Whatever be the opening of the cell of the dayroom.
Line of sight for us is more important than me looking in the camera. Wouldn't want to be able to look at the control room and have line of sight and everyone and that's what we would wish, so we would have line of sight.
Captain Deason, are you, do you have heartache over the double gate versus single at Sallyport exit?
At the sheriff's office? No, sir, I don't.
Okay. As long as you're happy.
All right, so, so right now, this is, anything else from y'all?
No, sir. We're, we're, we're at a good standstill. This is a moment to stop until we get a kind of a nod from you on a budget level to move forward. Because the next level, we engage a lot more professionals and money starts to spend pretty quickly. I don't want to do that until we're confident that this is a budget level we, we understand.
And as part of that conversation, we do have scheduled this Wednesday for your Cal meeting, our Bond Council and Financial Advisor, they will talk about funding strategies going forward. And so they will outline some options on how you might consider funding the detention facility as well as a regional park. But you can look at both separately or together in addition to the broader picture about our overall financial standing, bond capacity across the board for general obligation. But they'll specifically do a rundown on how we could fund at the ninety-million-dollar level for the detention center on Wednesday. If you have some other input today, they can adjust that presentation for Wednesday.
So they can expect to hear something back from us, so it'll be in the committee at the whole? Then will we be ready to discuss this in the March or April?
Yeah, if you're prepared, direction on Wednesday, we can have a resolution on the twenty-seventh agenda.
And once we do that, approve it, they can move forward?
Go out to bid and then they'll be full forward. Because the bid's the next step, right?
Actually, we're at a schematic level, so if you look at our next steps here, we're showing kind of that end of February, March timeframe we're in now to finish and get our budget approval. Then we roll into design development and construction documents and permitting. We'll start bidding, as you see, February twenty-four. So we're, we're a year worth of design to do.
Into occupation, you're looking at twenty-twenty-six?
July twenty-twenty-six.
Then Dennis, could, as we talked Wednesday, could we put in the Gantt chart the finances of how we're going to get to that point each step of the way?
Yes, the initial, yes, we'll have all that mapped out by year, the paydown for each year, because the bonds that we're looking at across the board, the recommendations are twenty-year bond, and so it'll have the payment schedule for over twenty years.
I mean, as far as getting those bonds floated, where does it fit in the chart?
Yeah.
Where do we fund the next step, that kind of thing?
Yep, we'll mess it up.
Thank you, Mr. Catledge.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our special presentations, and we will move on down to our citizens' comments. Please bear in mind, this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question and answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into microphones, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. First, we have Mr. Joe Greer. And Ms. Ann Christie. I didn't know whether y'all were going to speak separate. Y'all want three minutes each?
For a double act.
For a double act. Right hand, right here.
All right, go ahead.
My name is Joe Greer. I live at ten forty-three Hilldale Drive in Lancaster. And I'm the chair of the Lancaster County Historical Commission, which operates the Historic Courthouse Museum. And like you said, that's Ann Christie. She is the secretary of our historical commission. Well, thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight. And on behalf of the Lancaster County Historical Commission, let me first express our appreciation of your support of the commission and to the Historical Courthouse Museum. Regarding the chapters of freedom display, I support the concepts of the local displays of the documents. Regarding the settings for the display, we suggest a location other than the front of the historic courthouse. We fill it with detract from the view of the courthouse in both directions, diminish the setting of the courthouse on its dedicated block, and possibly cause issues with the underground electrical cables in front of the historic courthouse. Perhaps most importantly, the location of the charters of freedom display in the front of the historic courthouse might be considered inappropriate, incompatible, or unsuitable to how the founding documents of our nation displayed adjacent to a monument that some consider represents dividing of the nation. We consider a location, we considered a location at the rear of the courthouse, but this would detract from the memorial to the law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, and military veterans, and might diminish impact of the charters of freedom display as it is not on the street front and would have to be close to the memorial. A more suitable option might be the courtyard between the historic courthouse and the new courthouse. Paving and benches are already in place. It is near Main Street and is in an area walked regularly. Other options are the county administration building lobby, which has space and public access outside of the county administration building on Main Street or East Dunlap Street. There's a city park at South Main Street and a West Art Street, which would promote cooperation between the city and the county for the public good. An existing county or city park would be another option, perhaps the county recreation center such as the one at South Plantation Road where children come regularly and summer camps are held. Again, I thank you for opportunities to address you.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Greer, Ms. Christie. All right, we have Gwendolyn Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gwendolyn Brown James, and my address is thirty-one fifty-nine Pastor Lane, Lancaster, South Carolina. And I'm here to discuss yet again our family issues with our property. We have received some suggestions on different ways that we can divide the land, which is, one is a POA, which is a property owners' association, but leaving the lots as large lots. Because when we divide our lots into smaller lots, then we become a subdivision. So that is still a problem because we are not a subdivision. We're a rural family. We, we're a family who live on rural property. And we really need you guys to do something about this rule. So, because we want to still keep the beauty of country living, you know what I'm saying? So we've already said that many, many times. The other option was to put our land under LLC, but it's still going to have to be kept as a large property, you know what I'm saying, which is a limited liability corporation. We're not looking to label our property as a business either. We want our family to be able to activate their wills. We want them to be able to implement their wills to their ancestors, to our ancestors, our children. Then we have a third option, which was we can separate it however we want to, but then therein we become a subdivision again. So, guys, I don't know what to do about this problem, but we have definitely got a problem here. And, and, and it's difficult to come to a solution when you're making these rules. I know they have to apply across the board. I know they have to apply to everyone, everybody with rural property. But still, there's a situation here because we want, okay, for example, we have some relatives who have just one or two kids, so they're only going to divide their property twice. We have other people in our family who have seven kids and others have five kids. And if they divide, if we divide our property between those seven and five, then we end up with a subdivision. We are not a subdivision. So I don't know how many ways I can say that and keep smiling, but I'm trying because it's important. It's important to us, and it's important to a lot of other people who are in the same predicament. I don't know how many people you guys are dealing with who say something about their property land not being able to be divided, but that's one of ours. Then we have the road situation that is going to be discussed later tonight. And yes, I have a number of questions from my family members who want to know different things. I realize this is not the place to get answers, I get that. But we have questions about who's going to pay for the road? And if the road is put in, how, how do we go about maintaining? Who's got twenty thousand dollars for a road when you're on rural property? So we've got a lot of issues where our property is concerned, and we, we thank you guys so much for the time and attention you put to working on this. Thank you so much, Ms. Allison, because these guys are working really hard trying to figure all this out. But the rules have got to be changed. We've got to have rural property rules versus urban property rules. And that's really the only way that this is going to pan out for, I would say, everybody because we'll be happy and y'all will be happy too. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, that concludes our citizens' comments. Let's move on down to our non-consent agenda to have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items seven A, seven B, and seven C.
Second?
I have a motion from Mr. Mosteller, a second from Mr. McGriff. Any discussion?
Sorry, I'd like to get a clarification on the minutes from February fifteenth. The portion that had my statements, I believe what I was trying to say was that I'm in favor of promoting local retail businesses and would like to move forward with a discussion and review of the proposal.
Okay, we'll be. All right, so we're good like it is. Do we, we have to make an amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to amend it, yeah.
Motion from Mr. Louise, a second from Mr. Blackman. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment? Raise your right hand. Amendment is approved. Now we want to, we have, want to approve our consent agenda as amended. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our consent agenda as amended. Let's move down to eight A, our non-consent agenda, second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen forty regarding amending the unified development ordinance to UDO regarding six-point-four-point-one connectivity. Ms., I need a motion. I mean, a, yeah, do I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
Motion. Second?
I have a motion from Mr. Blackman, second from Mr. Caron, second rec.
Yes.
Ms. Harden?
This is the ordinance that we discussed last month about connectivity. It pertains specifically to dead-end roads and the ability to further subdivide off of them as Ms. Brown Jones, thank you, Ms. James, excuse me, stated that there are challenges in her area for subdividing. This is one of the, one of the items that staff came up with as an, to help out with her subdivision. It went through the Planning Commission for Review, Planning Commission, and staff recommended approval. We put it on hold for a little bit to see if there was something else we could do to help the family. And as part of the memo tied to your ordinance, we do have a recommendation, if you would allow us to go in and reevaluate and update the road classification system and some of the details pertaining to that. That would be another step forward to help the family. And we'll continue to look for opportunities to make it available to families that have issues dividing up property between heirs.
Are we having this problem with other property, other families?
The topic that's on the table right now, we did, this was brought up as part of a variance that was denied for another family. So this definitely has a little bit more history. There's, there's some, some issues that we're trying to work through and discuss. And I'll be happy to give you a broader evaluation of that at a future date.
Ms. McGriff, some nuances or situations, maybe not exactly like the two we've talked about here, have come up since I've been on council and have not been successfully resolved. So, I mean, we're moving in the right direction, I think. So, I mean, we're moving in the right direction, I think, you know, to try to accommodate some of these rural areas. And this will go to what you and I have talked about before, where with the new UDO, we have the southern, the middle, and then the northern or Indianland area. So I think this is going to do good justice if we keep moving forward to, you know, alleviating some of these problems in the rural area that really don't apply up in the upper parts and maybe not even in the middle parts of the county. And Allison, you were talking about the road classifications. Would that not improve other facets of our UDO? Meaning, this is a standard-based UDO, so we're going to improve those standards too for other reasons?
Yes, as we were talking to Ms. James and in the time where we asked you to put this on hold for us to get a look at it, we went back in and evaluated and realized there's some things that we do need to fix that were coming up as part of the UDO review anyway. So that would help. Yes, sir.
You're recommending tonight that we not act on this?
No, I'm recommending the opposite. I'm recommending you continue forward.
And then give you the direction.
And in addition, give me direction to speed up the review of the road classification or road hierarchy discussion. That would also help the family.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very much in favor of that, because, again, as we go through the new UDO, the more we can iron out now, the better off we'll be when that final write comes out to us to look at. So I happen to agree completely with the idea of what we're talking about here, passing this, giving them to go to study the road classifications.
This is a second reading, so are we going to change it again to the third reading? Or are we accepting what we got here?
I think we're going to move through and approve. If y'all want to, if y'all agree with this, we'll get to the third reading next time, and it'll be, this part will be finished, but then they'll present to us some road classifications to help improve some more situations.
Okay, but there is some situations in the Panhandle where this applies.
Okay, well, then good.
Is it Green Pond Lane?
Pond Lane.
That is what this addresses at.
Yeah, that was going to be taken care of.
Yeah, we've got some like the Green Pond, which is not a big deal because it's smaller acres in there, but when you get spitting up 50 acres per child, what is that, one of them decides to sell that 50 acres one of these days, and then they want to subdivide it, then you got issues. So we can't just let them just turn it loose on it. We have to have some kind of provisions in there for that.
I had hoped to have an answer for you guys in, excuse me, for council, pardon me, in two weeks, but it was a bigger discussion than two weeks could handle, which is why I'm asking you for permission to go forward with moving up the hierarchy discussion. It will take more than just a two-week period. I'll have to work with Public Works and with emergency management, run it through the staff, run it through the TRC, and make sure that we have the evaluate, make sure we can put it on the map and see all the different places where the rule might apply and try and troubleshoot any potential issues before we bring it to you.
So is this not going to be, I mean, if you're passing on a second ordinance and you still haven't done all this homework?
I beg your pardon. I'm talking about the road hierarchy, not the extension. The extension that's on for second reading needs no extra work. It's been approved by the Planning Commission and the staff recommended approval. And we're not recommending any changes to that. We're recommending a second study to go alongside this, because this will not solve Ms. James's issue alone.
I understand that, and, you know, I struggle with the extending roads further and subdividing it further, and obviously, these roads, if they're extended, are not going to be county roads. I mean, the county road system's closed. That's my understanding.
That'll come out in the next phase after we approve this, Mr. Griffin, so we're not.
I know you're not there, but I just.
And to Mr. Mosteller's point, we may not be able to cure everybody's problems. Maybe we can improve some, but I don't know where this, Mr. Mosteller, I have no idea, but I just know that we need to look at it.
I know we need to look at, but we also don't need to create something that we don't intend to create or some people are going to take advantage of it. I mean, I think that's what Mr. Mosteller's worried about.
We need to know the consequences if we're going to do it. But I think we're moving forward in the right direction, because if other families are having this problem, we need something that they can at least live with.
With this amendment.
Was talking about, you know, if they've got a big acreage in there, if the roads are to be extended down for them to split up property would be on their own. It wouldn't be on the county to extend this road down and deep into this acreage and stuff. I mean, we're going to look at that as far as.
Well, we might have gotten ahead of ourselves.
The county road is whatever.
We're just looking at roads as they existed when this ordinance was implemented. If they're extended, then that, this is off the table, basically.
Okay.
Any extension under this potential would still have to come up to current standards of the roads, classifications, the asphalt level, the right-of-way width, and the like. So all this does is it'll allow for the extension of subdivision off of roads that were created before 2016. That does not exempt them from having to come up to the current standards in the design manual.
I'm just talking about as far as leaving it as a dirt road like it is now or whatever, just.
It would not allow that to happen currently.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Chairman and council members, if I may, so the action in front of you tonight on second reading really is what addresses a green pond road issue that was concerns about, can you develop off of a dead-end road? So that's taking care of that. But as we are going through, trying to address Ms. James's issue and some of the others, that's where we said, there's maybe some different solutions. We couldn't find it within this current structure. So we're suggesting pass this tonight. That'll address some. And then give us time. We'll come back to you, because in addition, including the road hierarchy and what's available, how does it have to be paved, can it be paved, what width, that'll be part of that. But also, part of it is the number of times a parcel can be subdivided, because that's been an issue too, that we also are working on that to bring that forward to you so we can address some of those issues. As I think Mr. Blackman highlighted, prior to the full UDO, we can take some of these issues and bring them to you for consideration.
So just to clarify, so if we approve this tonight, will it allow additional lot developments off of Green Pond Lane?
I believe correctly, you can, yes, what was the request, it should address theirs. It won't allow subdivisions that we're talking about. But yes, it will allow them to do the subdividing that I can't remember the family thing they came forward with.
All right, any more questions? Any more discussion? All right, we got a motion on the floor for approval of second reading of ordinance 2023-1840. Think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. So with second reading, passes by a vote of six for and one opposed. All right, anything on our table? Deferred or held items? Nothing. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious. I brought it up a month or so ago. Where are we on our investment policy?
On what?
Investment policies.
Mr. Chairman, it will be part of our conversation as a budget. I'm not sure if we have it on the second budget workshop or the third, but there is some information we want to present for you for guidance for the treasure, for our investment policy.
All right, let's move on down to executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss four items, which include receipt of legal advice, subject to attorney-client privilege regarding potential fee agreements? We have three of those. And the fourth item will be receipt of legal advice, subject to attorney-client privilege regarding an economic development discussion, Project Spider. Do I have a motion?
No, moved.
Second?
Motion from Mr. Louise, second from Ms. McGriff. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval to go into executive session. We are now in executive session.
I'll make you a copy of that. I've got an idea.
[coughs]
Um.
They did that. I didn't do it. That's right. They do. They're a good daddy, too. I gotta say that about my son-in-law.
Sure, absolutely.
He really is.
I'd like to call this meeting the Lancaster County Council back to order. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Oh, moved.
Motion from Ms. McGree for second. For Mr. Moss stellar, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous agreement to come out of the executive session.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, council met an executive session for four items: The receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding potential fee agreements; receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding existing fee agreements; receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding existing fee agreements again; and finally, receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding an economic development discussion, Project Spider. No decisions were made and no votes were taken.
Thank you, ma'am. Now at 8:48, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Louise.
Second.
Second for Mr. Carnes. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval to adjourn tonight. This meeting is adjourned.